We have a long, uh, attended tonight. We have been in a very big communication session. Uh, you will need to organize so that we can, uh, make this process flow as easily as possible. We will hope that you will refrain from making comments and or nor to explore and or against the comments that are being made. Um, the individual will go into the order that is outlined in their clerk's letter announcing this meeting.
Cruz.
President.
Precasi.
Eric.
Morris.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Mandar Wong.
President.
Brightwell.
Here.
Mr. President, you have the call.
I guess I called for the order of the clerk and I forgot that I had to ask her to do a duty. But, um, we respect your while we're here tonight. I think the majority of individuals are, it will respect to their ordinance. And the council has proceeded to... All right. We're glad we're gonna start, uh, start this again and, um, we will have the pleasure to reach you. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Um, there's a lot of communication going on, so we will, uh, make sure that tonight will flow as easily and as smoothly as possible. The ordinance that will be forced today is for the benefit of, uh, all the tenants in the city of Southfield. And the council, we have constituencies that are homeowners, we have renters, we have business owners, we have constituencies that traverse through the city of Southfield and that, that work in Southfield. Everything that we do as a council, we try to make sure that everyone is evenly hammered in our, and/or even, uh, felt to be at home here in the city of Southfield while they are here. This ordinance, uh, will go into effect in ninety days and it's my understanding that there's, well, I've seen some communication that went out to some of the residents, that they will be, um, individually, individually charged for the expense of the home inspection. They, those, we will be randomly selecting twenty percent of each complex. And if you just happen to be randomly selected, it was not our intent that you would have to pay the fee. Uh, for the landlord to indicate that they, the individual would be individually responsible for that one hundred dollars and/or the fees, that's pretty mean spirited and it's kinda like my perspect- perspective and also others' perspective. We created hysteria and creating concern and also we realize that individuals have, uh, monthly budgets and that for a monthly budget to be, um, hit with one hundred dollars is not, um, uh, something to be, uh, laughed about. So in doing that, we wanted to make sure that we were doing, uh, some things that are not inappropriate. So we, we polled all, we, our village there polled all our really surrounding, um, communities that have, um, apartment inspection. None of them charge the individual occupant of that particular, uh, unit, the inspection fee. And our building probably came up with nineteen locations and, and including the ones that surround us, uh, Troy, Detroit, Longyear, Westland, Easther. That's just a name of few, but they moved that one out to Brad Rapids. Uh, they moved it to St. Clair Shore in Madison Heights, um, Canton. Um, so from the, coming out of corporate America, I presume you know that when there's a, when there's a charge and/or an expense, sometimes that expense is eaten by the corporation in the end. And by eating that particular expense, we write it off on our taxes as, as, as a cost to do a business. And/or if there's a fee, we will spread it out across all our constituents, all our customers. So, so it's not to, um, get one individual who just happened to buy that product that day with the, with the full expense of him hitting that product. If you, if you understand what I'm saying, with respect to spread the cost across all the, uh, end users. So with that, um, I communicated those thoughts in a letter to several, uh, individuals that reached out to me directly and or reached out to the council directly. And I got, I got positive feedback because they were getting both sides of the story. And with the Southfield, it's not directly charging anybody. They're charging the, the building units and or the landlords, uh, for the inspection fee, which is the cost of our inspectors, uh, inspecting that unit. Uh, Southfield's a, uh, we're a municipality, we're nonprofit, so we're not in this business to make a profit, to, to make anything that, of our parks and services. Any of our services that we provide, they're pretty much break even and to, uh, service the, uh, cover the taxpayer costs of providing that service. Now, to get the, uh, meeting started, I will start with the first individual on the list of you being recognized. Mrs. Beth Green Apple? Miss?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Good, good evening, Mayor Cypher, City Council and Southfield community members. I am Beth Green Apple. I live in the Southfield apartment complex. I got a letter from my management telling me to oppose the inspection ordinance that was passed at last round of this meeting. I am here instead to support the ordinance. My management needs supervision. They don't seem to know that ownership, with ownership comes responsibility. In the two years I've lived in my apartment, I have been profoundly disappointed in what I get for the thousand plus dollars I pay every month. I get clogged toilets, broken doors, litter everywhere, mud streaming down to the entry area of my building, a swimming pool closed for most of summer two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen because of high levels of bacteria, litter everywhere. I already said that. Shabby landscaping in, even except in the immediate environments of the leasing office and the model apartments that people are shown when they come to potentially rent. Very slippery weather conditions, uh, winter conditions due to gutter leakage onto steps and sidewalks at entryways, mowing and snowing ruled it isn't great either. On-site management and maintenance turned over at an alarming rate for the entire first year of my residency. Here's what I do oppose. Management warned us that according to a clause of our leases, the hundred dollar inspection fee would be paid by us. You just referred to that, Mr. Brightwell. That doesn't sound right to me. Management is responsible, according to our leases, for maintaining the property, its buildings, sidewalks and streets. Tenants live in apartments for a variety of reasons. I chose an apartment primarily for budget reasons, not unusual among my neighbors. I encourage City Council to find a way to oversee apartment managers and tenants without, without tenants paying for inspections. Most of the problems are community issues, not individual apartment issues, although there are plenty of those as well. People choose an apartment instead because of, of a house because in general they may not be financially liable for repairs and maintenance of the property. I'm confident that with the creative minds on this council...
Beth, we get three minutes now.
I see.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll go all night, so we'll try to stay on schedule.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. We all wanna wait one way or another. Appreciate you coming.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Yes, ma'am. The next person to be recognized is, uh, Carolyn Holland.
Yes. I wanted to say thank you for playing the speaker. My main concern is our language, my friends and my neighbors also and our management also told us the same thing, that if you have a clause in our lease that says we have to pay this one hundred dollar fee. And what we want to know is what happens if we refuse your entry into the unit for some reason, our lease. We were told that we would be subpoenaed, that we would be, you know, legal precautions. So we wanted to make sure that, is that true or not? That's our first question. Can we refuse? And as I said, we do have the clause, we did read the clause and we are supposed to pay that. And we raised our court for the paper that said we didn't and we've pushed back and we still have the same thing referred to the clause and legal issues in the event that we refuse. That's, that's me.
Okay, thank you. Um, we will not get back and forth and try to answer the question tonight, but if you will give your question to our clerk, the question will be answered, um, with respect to your address and name. If we start entertaining every question, we'll be here way past midnight. So thank you, Mrs. Holland. The next individual to be addressed to, going to be recognized is Hannah Nash. This is the next person to be recognized, this is Ramon Perk.
Good evening, residents. The resident colleagues, I am so proud to stand here and hear this opposition to this quality of life issue is which where I'm at with this ordinance. It is a quality of life issue. Uh, you're gonna hear a lot of issues tonight, so I want you to respect the time. Uh, we choose to live in a clean, safe and healthy place. So in order for us to live in this clean, safe and healthy place, we need to keep our eyes on the price, we need to keep our eyes on the road. So I'm lending my voice in support of this ordinance. This ordinance is nothing less than consumer protectionism. This ordinance is a humanitarian intervention. Where's everyone's sense of civic duty with this ordinance? Who's in opposition of this ordinance? It's our inherent right to live in a clean, safe and healthy residence. Now let me make this perfectly clear. To my knowledge and trust of this elected body, there is no charge to any tenant for inspection fee. No charge. Now that's my trust in my elected body here, who's telling me this. So this ordinance is lending itself to a quality of life guarantee. And for anyone to equate a one hundred dollar inspection fee to this quality of life issue in which we as seniors deserve, respect and need, for anyone to put a note or anyone's door and say that you won't get inspected, which is how I'm interpreted, unless you, you resident, pay this one hundred dollar fee. You will not have a wonderful living experience for the rest of your life after you've done it for us to get us here is just not right. I don't understand why there should be conflict with this particular ordinance. What we are trying to get folks, ladies and gentlemen, children, are, it's just a quality of life. I don't close my door, turn on my TV, read the newspaper, help my granddaughter with her homework and move on to the next day. And in order for me to do that, I need a clean, safe and healthy place to do that. In order for me to do that, I need to have the city of Southfield ensure that I have a quality apartment for my granddaughter, for myself, so that we can live in this city of Southfield where there's the Southfield standards, where there's a place that we all can comfortably call home. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to be recognized is Mr. Harold Gerald.
Good evening, residents.
Good evening.
I am honored and humbled to know that after almost thirty-four and a half years that I still have the trust of the residents, their confidence and their support. One of my many Southfield angels told me that my blessings come from the north and not the south. I remember. No weapons formed against me shall prosper and every tongue that bides up against me a judgment will be condemned. You, you think you're campaigning now for twenty nineteen? Damn right, well. Residents, you can go to YouTube and watch the March, March fifth Southfield City Council meeting. Cue it to counter timer, one hour, thirty-seven minutes and thirty-one seconds to listen to Dan Brightwell's commentary. Dan Brightwell said specifically at one hour and thirty-eight minutes on the counter timer that he did not want a meeting where several hundred people come into the room uninvited telling us what they want them, meaning the city council, to do. Dan Brightwell, you owe these residents. The citizens are at the top of the organizational chart and you work for the taxpayer. And I am a taxpayer also in the city of Southfield and I don't pay your salary. What I wanna say to you, Dan Brightwell, is the Open Meetings Act of nineteen seventy-six indicate that these meetings are public and anyone can attend it. They don't have to be invited by you or any of your colleagues. And they're able to speak on two occasions. If they sign up previously, the Wednesday before the meeting by you, or if they're recognized by a council member. And that's about all that you can say about that. I'm really, uh, disappointed that watching you be council president is a farce of them. I mean, I just don't even understand that, Dan Brightwell, that I helped get elected because your first bid was not successful. And I have a proven track record campaigning in the city of Southfield. I make winners. I also wanna let you know that I hope you benefit from the parliamentary process. You're doing a lot of things that don't make sense, putting a sign on the door that says employees only. I told you years ago, I'm the kind of person that you have to create a policy for because I know the rules too. So in closing, I just wanna say, with your obsequious nature towards Ken Cypher, I have no confidence in your ability to lead this council, to preside over these meetings. You're trying to win friends and people. You're trying to fit in and be a part of the establishment. Why don't you use your accounting skills that you boasted about Wharton School of Finance? And why don't you track down some of those figures for Northland? Why don't you use your auditing abilities to do a forensic audit for Northland? Two seconds to go.
Thank you.
Get up, baby.
Let me just go off track here for one minute. Uh, Mrs. Gerald seemed to be fixated on me.
Like you're fixated on me with all your little policies for little Brad?
I, um, no more house firsts. This is, this is, um, we're trying to maintain over here. I sat through a couple hours session of amateur seekers, rather lose the order, and the individual bear with the witness for thirty years, looked at a bunch of our tapes. We have one, this is here. The lady who consulted with all some major corporations in the city of, uh, Detroit, Metro, in the state, Southfield, did a very good job. And she has seen my, uh, tape, so I wanna cut to the chase on that. Plus, one final thing, I was elected council president and...
Excuse me. I don't understand the dialogue at this point because you give everybody three minutes to talk and two or three people have spoken prior to this lady here. And just because she seems to scratch you the wrong way, you want to cover for yourself and you want to, and witnesses here. I, uh, I don't, we don't want your witnesses here. She said what she said and then let her ride, let's get to the end of this and then, in that way, but you end up trying to confuse this, put yourself, sir, this is, this is that time.
Sir, okay, let me, let me finish. All right. This lady is fixated on me and I have a, I wanna just put one more, one more, one more thing on the table. I was elected president, the council, I've been on council one year and ten months and I have gotten from a very authoritative source that I'm the most impactful first time in city council person they have seen in twenty years. So let's just leave that where it is and we will go on to the next individual, Mr. Gerard Muller. Mr. Muller, go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Muller, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box One Fifty-Five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero through seven. Tonight, I'd like to talk about section four point one six. Section four point one six in the Southfield City Charter. Four point one six is entitled Planning and Zoning. And I quote from section four point one six, B, quote, "The zoning board of appeals shall possess five members to be selected by council. None of whom shall hold any other appointed or elective office," unquote. On December fourth and December fifteen, twenty seventeen, I pointed out that the former councilman, Lloyd Bell, was in violation of section four point one six B of the city charter by serving on the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals, that is the CBA, concurrently for seven consecutive years. Today, we have a Lloyd Bell wannabe, an alternate member of the CBA who also serves in what appears to be a charter violation on the construction board of appeals. This is somewhat in the gray area because section four point one six does not address alternates and neither does the charter itself. And state law does allow for two alternates on the CBA. I'm bringing this to council's attention solely as a public service. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person to be recognized is Mrs. Brenda Bass. Next person to be recognized is, uh, Marguerite McKeever.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I would like to acknowledge those that are present this evening here to speak out against the ordinance. I'd ask you to do me a favor. Ask yourself, have you actually read the ordinance? This ordinance has become necessary unfortunately because of bad owners and landlords like the one I have at the Southfire. Uh, I have, um, lived at the Southfire for a year and a half. I have been subjected to no eat, no harbor. There is inadequate toilet facilities, trash shoots that are taped up so that the trash cannot be disposed. There is trash that is not picked up on a regular basis. I know this goes on and on. So I am one of those tenants that have been targeted for eviction. However, I am not one that is afraid, believe you, or tell you, and I look forward to my day in court. But I know there are tenants that are afraid. Uh, they have, they've clearly stated here in chambers that they receive letters, they've been, you know, things have been pointed out in their lease agreements that they will be charged a one hundred dollar fee. And I would ask them just to, you know, stand tall, be unafraid. Um, you know, I agree, I agree that if there is an issue, I know if my landlord was to try and present me with a, a fee, I simply wouldn't pay it, would report that landlord to the city attorney. So that's what I'd ask all the tenants to do and I would say to the chamber, to council, I do appreciate you guys, uh, not surrendering to these property owners. And I would say that this is an opportunity this evening for you to address not only tenants' concerns, but tenants' fears. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person to be recognized is Afraf Bandar, B-A-N-D-A-R.
Hello. Hello. Good afternoon, city of Southfield. Uh, I'm here today about that, about some kind of our gas station, Ten Mile and Evergreen. Uh, okay. Sorry. Is that better?
Yeah.
Good? Okay. You know, first of all, we've been in the city of Southfield with business since nineteen ninety for twenty-eight years. We love the city, we love the community. And recently, we just got a letter about moving the icebox. And in, in that time, we've been in business twenty-eight years, we've gone through a major renovation where the city had to inspect their building. So I'm just here to, you know, to fight, to keep the icebox where it's safe because it's an outside fixture. We can't go inside. And doing my diligence, you know, local businesses around the area, you know, the prober, there's something, you know, swing set in front of the grocery store, you know, and we're, we're a gas station with seven ice, it's part of it, you know. I've never been to a grocery store without a swing set. You know, so I'm just here, you know, to ask, to please let us keep this icebox in part of our store because we have no other place but...
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bandar, I want you to write down your question. Uh, I think this has been moving through the process, but make sure, uh, leave a note with this clerk so Brad will get a direct answer to you.
I'm sorry, what's that? Leave a note?
Well, your name, your item issue discussed, leave it with the clerk so we can get a direct answer to you. I think this item is flowing through the system.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry, I have a chance. Can I just ask, what's the name of your gas station and where's it located?
It's the, oh, well, Ten Mile Evergreen.
Ten Mile.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next person to be recognized is Mr. Kevin Harris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here for a totally different reason. My name is Kevin Harris. My residence is twenty-four, six, one, zero, Lafayette Circle, over here in Southfield. I'm a twenty-eight-year military veteran. Had reparations by Secretary of Defense, Secretary of Air Force, WILDA sitting on when, uh, she was in office and some other things. I got a bag from the accolades I was gonna show and, uh, I got some things here written in... I got some things here in, uh, Jet Magazine that were bought me. And the only reason I brought this up is because, you know, people get character, they look at anything, but okay, I got a decent character. I've had twenty-eight years of serving my country since nineteen seventy-nine. Point I'm getting to now, I'm scared in my own city. I'm scared in my own city, that man knows why. Yes, you do, sir. The police, the police, you would happen to be the wife of the chief whip. You, okay, because, uh, they fostering a system here to where the complaint, if you wanna go pick out complaints, you have to go up to the desk. That's the first action. Then you have to, oh, well, then wait for the lieutenant, let me hurry up and speed this through. Point is, by the time the lieutenant, they have you sit down looking like a little kid, uh, you know, you're, you're, you're getting pretty angry. My point is, what happened to me is, I'm on my own property. I have PTSD, a one-hundred percent. I don't bother nobody, I got a dog, he's licensed by Southfield. I had a man come drive up in my driveway, no identification whatsoever. Asked me my name, I told him, no, my name is not, and I get the heck out of my driveway. The next thing I know, he goes down, he asks my mailman, is this Mr. Harris? But, no, my mailman can't give out that kind of information, he'll get fired. The next thing I know, I got Southfield, two Southfields police sitting across from me. One black guy, one go slickly. Hey, Mr. Harris, hey, Kevin, like he knows me on a personal basis. Right? And I go, oh, for what? He doesn't explain why he's out here, he doesn't do anything. And this has been the first time I've been intimidated. People have come to my house with guns, threatening to shoot my dog. When is the city of Southfield going to protect me? I've been twenty-eight years. So, y'all can sit there and do this, or you can sit there and pat yourself on the back and go look and say how many people you think you have. But I tell you what, buddy, I've been a whole lot of people happy, alright? I got my notebook in there, but I'm gonna tell you what, I know how to go in the news, I've been on B E T before, I've been on... Now, you didn't go this week, because I'm tired, my time is up. You're right, my time is up. This, you haven't heard the last bit. Like you said, how much time I want to spend on it, I'm retired, buddy, that's how much time I got.
Next person to be recognized is Ms. Margaret Langston Beckham.
Why should black kids, why did he tear, let me say right.
Ms. Beckham. The next person to be recognized is Mr. Ervin Williams.
Mr. Harris, can I get your phone?
Mr. Williams. He's right. Next person to be recognized is Ms. Brenda Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brenda Smith. I'm a little upset, um, about the young man. But I live at one six five, zero, zero, North Park Drive, formerly known as Sapphire. Let me first say to the tenants that are against the ordinance, I understand your reservation, um, because of your property, uh, which your managers telling you your rent will be increased and that your leases will be expired or, or, um, messed with. But some of us want you to understand what we have went through at the Sapphire Apartments since November of two thousand and seventeen. We have been without water. We have been without hot water and heat and elevators. And that, for many of you, may be something that you have not experienced, but we have. We have possibly had the worst apartment experience in Southfield's history. I am very happy that young, I'm nobody, have the political portability, the political portability to go and write some legislation that will help and protect all of us living in these apartments, whether we afford the ordinance or not, we are still protected by the ordinance. And so I hope that you will not surrender to business influence and will stay the course and will enact your ordinance one six sixty-one. And finally, in the event that there is any problem with political, um, setback on council, I personally can assure you, I will stand with you anywhere and argue this point, whether it's in this body, outside, or in the courts. That I can assure you of, and thank you for the opportunity to talk and please the young man that must be forced. Um, I'm, I'm very saddened by it, so I have to...
Thank you. Next person to be recognized is Mr. Harold Hill.
Hello, my name is Harold Hill, this is council, may I fly by? Um, I empathize with those people that appear for the, uh, apartment issues and especially, I truly empathize with you, I'm not here for that reason. This evening, I had another subject that I was, uh, made a pair of. I just noticed that, excuse me, in the Southfield Sun, March twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, that we have a special election coming up, uh, concerning the school board. And the state's made a eight, two thousand and eighteen special election, Southfield Public Schools, the sinking fund millage proposal. And it's in specific precincts, I don't think all the precincts are listed, uh, here for that special millage vote. And so, I'd like to find out, first of all, more information about the millage, um, that we're still holding on because you can't make a informed decision unless you have some more information about that. And I've only seen one thing, a part of that in the papers, it's supposed to be. But I booed our special election and have not seen one single solitary piece of literature. And if we're voting on something, I know the residents of Southfield would like to know more information also. Um, so that's one point. Um, because you don't know, I don't know how long the millage had been in fact. Uh, I don't know if it's been outdated and they're just need to reimplement that, uh, sinking fund millage. But I know it's for the schools, that sounds great, but I can't make an informed decision. And I know even those can, unless they have that information. So that's why today, I just wanted to find out some specific information, if there's a place that I can go to, and maybe some of the clerk's office information or somewhere, but I haven't seen anything, uh, about it. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Greg Keeler.
Before he comes, Mr. Michael, Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Uh, actually, you're talking to the wrong group, you should be talking to the school board.
Okay.
That's, that's who put the millage issue on the ballot. So, uh, our clerk only runs the election, she doesn't have anything to do with, uh, the millage itself. So, go to the school board and find out, and I'm saying this so that everybody else will know that too. That is not a city issue, that's a different government en, uh, entity. So go to the school board and find out. And that's over around behind the main fire station.
Right.
Okay?
And Mr. President, also, our, our city is divided into three school districts. So you're not going to see every precinct on this election because our city encompasses the Oak Park School District and Birmingham School District, and those precincts don't vote for Southfield's sinking fund millage issue.
Okay. Thank you. Just stop the residency now.
Hi, my name is Greg Keeler, I also come here for a different issue. Mine is for code enforcement for parking off street. And the question I have, um, is can I park in my parking, in my driveway? Can visitors park in my driveway? Um, it states that forty-eight hours I must move my vehicles. So in forty-eight hours, can I go on vacation, do I need a pass? Can I go to the hospital, do I need a pass? Can people come over my house and stay longer than forty-eight hours? Do we need passes for these things? And can I drive my car when I want? Do I must, must I pollute the air every forty-eight hours? You think this is, uh, an environmental issue? For forty-eight hours, I must pollute the air? Um, an ozone action day, must I drive my car on that day? It doesn't need forty-eight hours, time limit. Um, it's also an economical and environmental, and people that have lung problems, which my grandchild happens to have, that is not a favorable thing for me to be out there just driving my car willy-nilly. If I don't want to drive my car, if I don't want to increase my carbon footprint, I should not be made to increase my carbon footprint. And if I'm correct, on ozone action days, that's a federal government thing that says I should not be out there driving my car with just no reason. So I don't understand why this code is stuck here to make me blue. Thank you.
Next is Michael Janice Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Gary Foster.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council. Uh, Gary Foster, I do oversee several hundred units in the City of Southfield. Um, I'll start by saying, I think your ordinance is insulting and humiliating to the very residents that it's intended to protect. Uh, in an earlier meeting, our council president, uh, said that he thought that this ordinance would be a voice of the residents of the City of Southfield. And to me, I took that as he doesn't think that our residents and the, uh, residents of the City of Southfield are capable or adequate in going through their own home and, uh, identifying deficiencies. Now, he thinks that the government would do a much better job of coming into people's homes because you're living with a day in and a day out, you wouldn't know if there was a problem there. Well, I'll tell you, my residents have no problem picking up the phone and letting me know that there's a problem. And, and you'll do all of this, uh, under the idea or under the guise of public safety, health and public safety. And who can't get behind health and public safety? It sounds great, but if you're genuinely concerned with public safety, why don't you start in the public areas? Start in the common areas like basements, you know, these areas that, that house boilers and furnaces and hot water tanks and mechanical areas, uh, electrical systems, those are the areas that pose a real threat to buildings and the public safety and the occupants of those buildings. Why wouldn't you start there? I'll tell you why you don't start there. Because it doesn't generate revenue. Speaking of revenue, our mayor sent out a memo last week indicating that this ordinance, it doesn't, uh, call for, uh, tenants to be making these payments. In fact, he underlined the word no and made it bold, that it's not their responsibility, it's the responsibility of the landlord. You know, we got a lot of really brave people here. Where do you think the landlord gets the money? If not the, if not from the tenant? Do you look as to hide it in our budgets? You know, you used to do that with things like gas and electricity, oh, your rent, we'll just keep inflating your rent. No, we said, we want you to know that there's somebody digging in our pocket for money to make your housing better, so-called. So we're gonna pass that expense on. It's a direct cost, and that's why it's being passed on. And you keep saying that it's twenty percent. If you go read your ordinance that you're trying to pass, it says a minimum of twenty percent. I, the whole thing is very frustrating to me. And I think people are getting snowballed, and that's why I'm here. I want them to know the truth. And, and if I have time left, which I don't, I was gonna say in a second, I can answer the question about search warrants, and tired of the city.
Foster, your turn, sir.
Thank you.
Crystal Robert John Conner.
Good evening, my name is Robert John Conner, City of Southfield, two one zero one Conner Court. Been a Southfield resident for thirty-four years. I want to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance sixteen sixty-one. Although I've been a homeowner most of the years in Southfield, I was initially a renter at Chetford Air Apartments. First word about the subject after seeing the TV news reports in early January, and a few weeks later, saw the residents from the Sapphire speak at a council meeting on the issues they've been experiencing. Uh, to the residents, if you've not looked at it, and I know some of you have, but the, uh, your, your copy of last, uh, week's Southfield Sun newspaper, it does have a full page ad from the City of Southfield explaining many of the details on the ordinance. And if you want to dig further into the background, I encourage you to go to YouTube, search for Southfield City Council Meetings, look at the applicable portions of the March fifth and twenty-sixth meetings. There are a lot of insightful comments during the discussion between the city staff and the council in those meetings. And thanks to the gentlemen that sometimes is in the back of the room recording these videos for our use. Please communicate, keep communicating to the city council and mayor with your issues as well. To the council, I would want to say it was disappointing to learn that many years ago, the former council had started drafting a similar ordinance, but it was never implemented. As was stated at your last meeting, we just kicked the can down the road. And so please don't do that again, or leave it for some other council later on to pick up. The ad in the Southfield Sun was a good initial effort to provide residents with actual facts about the ordinance. However, given the feedback, then hearing from some of the residents, it's obvious that there could be some more specific communications required. One suggestion I would say is a reference document, uh, with the expected fees for the first year incurred by the owners of the affected complexes in Southfield. For example, a March fifth meeting, you had mentioned that the Sapphire property owner would have an estimated six to seven thousand dollar fee for the first year associated with the inspection of common areas and twenty percent of its three hundred and thirteen units. Also, as the inspections are completed, update that document with whether the complex received a one- or three-year inspection approvals, since complexes that receive three-year may have it spread over a longer period of time. Dealing with difficult issues is why voters put you in office, so thank you for addressing them. And I encourage you to enact ordinance sixteen sixty-one, thank you.
Thank you. Next person to be recognized is, um, Yeniki Lee.
Alenzi.
I'm sorry, Alenzi. Next person to be recognized is Ms. Yeniki Lee. Next person to be recognized is Ms. Lila, Lila France.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Lila France, and I'm a tenant in Southfield apartment building. First, many, first, many thanks to Mayor Cyberg and the city council for working diligently to protect the tenants of Southfield and improve the apartment inspection ordinance. I would like to just take a few minutes of your time and speak about my experience in my apartment building. I have been a tenant for eleven years at the same apartment building. Beginning in December two thousand and seventeen, I was dislocated the hotel for ten days due to the burst in the pipes because the entire apartment building had no heat or water. Many tenants stayed for longer period of time. In January two thousand and eighteen, I was dislocated second time over ten days because my two bedroom flooded and my apartment had to be recompeted. To date, many of these issues have not been resolved. There are many more stories to tell, more severe problems than mine. But when Mayor Cyberg and the city council were apprised about the problems in our building, they didn't hesitate to take action. Mayor, Mayor Cyberg, and several council members visited our apartment building, and they also sent city inspectors out to evaluate conditions of the building. This ordinance came about because we, as tenants, want and deserve to live in a healthy and safe environment. This ordinance is explained in its entirety in our newspaper, the Southfield Sun. The tenants are not responsible... The tenants are not responsible for the inspection of, of the building, but the landlords and the building owners are. Thank you for your turn.
Thank you. Next person to be recognized is Ms. Carolyn Henderson. Henderson, Henderson. The next person to be recognized is Mr. Philip Newman.
Good evening. My name is Philip Newman. I'm an attorney and I'm also the legislative chairperson of the Detroit Metropolitan Apartment Association, which is an association which represents many landlords in Southfield and throughout Southeast Michigan. Our organization encourages landlords to maintain their apartment communities in good and safe condition. And we applaud efforts to crack down on bad landlords. And make no mistake, we recognize that there may be some bad landlords. But by and large, most apartment communities in Southfield and Southeast Michigan are run by good landlords who do want to maintain safe environment for their residents. Our organization opposes this proposed ordinance in its present form for a number of reasons. And let me just digress for a second. I'm a little confused because I understand that this ordinance says now you have been passed, yet Mayor Cyberg and other and the Southfield Sun advertisement even suggest that this ordinance has already passed. So that's a little bit of misinformation in our judgment. But nevertheless, we ask the city council to table this ordinance for reasons that I would like to articulate. First, we believe that there are drafting issues with the ordinance. We understand that the intent of the ordinance is that twenty percent of the apartment homes will be inspected on a random basis. But section eight point six oh five parent two gives the building department authority to inspect, quote, "not less than twenty percent of all dwelling units," close quote. So that means, in my view, that the building department can elect independently to do more than twenty percent than violate the intent of the ordinance. It's just not clear. Secondly, we understand that the intent of the ordinance is to allow apartment complexes that are in compliance to go three years between inspections and to have a three-year certificate of compliance. That's section eight point six oh five parent four. But eight point six oh five parent one says, quote, "all multiple family residential family dwellings shall be subject to an annual inspection." Subject only to subsection five, doesn't reference subsection four. So there's an ambiguity that the building department could choose to ignore and, and do inspections on a yearly basis rather than every three years for the good landlords. We have problems with this ordinance because we believe that it does not provide equal protection. It doesn't address condominiums in any respect. Condominiums are multifamily housing just as much as apartment communities, yet they are not addressed in any respect by this ordinance. We have a problem with the fees. There is currently proposed a one hundred dollar per unit fee on each inspected unit, plus a twenty-five dollar charge per floor, which could result in a substantial burden on landlords. For example, South Place Apartments has five hundred and twelve units. Therefore, they will incur a minimum of eleven thousand two hundred dollars in fees. They have forty buildings. Some of those buildings are townhomes. Are the townhomes going to be hit with two charges? One for the apartment plus one for each floor of the townhome?
Mr. Newman.
Thank you very much.
As I said before, anyone who has questions, please detail those questions with your name and pass it to the clerk and then we'll be addressing. Okay, the next person to be recognized, C.R. Rattrick. Next person to be recognized is Carlene Lewin.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, councilmembers, mayor, everyone that took time out of their night to come. I appreciate it. Um, I feel I have a, you know, a unique perspective. I own a condo. I rent a Southfield apartment. And I'm going to tell you a sad, embarrassing story and hope that you don't laugh at me. Six years ago, I was employed by an outer state owner who did not care for his property. Some of you may recognize that I actually paid for repairs out of my own pocket. I'm not made of money, so it didn't last long. But my point is, the tenants of that community were able to contact the city and the city did their job admirably. They went in, I believe they, after I quit, I, I heard from the, my replacement that they let me fines. They threatened to, um, to put liens on the community. And today, I happen to know, because I, I know an employee that was there, the community turned around completely. My point is, the city already has the right to go in, as we've heard from several residents. If a resident wants to call, is not getting a response from their community, they currently have the ability to contact the city. The vast majority of Southfield apartments are well-maintained. Complaint-based issues should be just that, handled on a complaint basis. Now, for my own personal, I do not want my apartment inspected. My management company handles things. If they don't, again, myself and anyone else residing in my community knows we can count on the city clearly to handle it. I definitely don't want my condo inspected. I don't know if passing the ordinance for the apartments is the first step and the next is going to be condos, but I don't want that to happen, any more than I would let my lender knock on my door and come in and take a look. Lastly, um, when I speak about fees, I think everyone understands that every business passes along their fees in one way, shape, or form. If a, if tomatoes went from two dollars a pound to two thousand a pound, the restaurant's going to pass that expense on. Owners, as, as President Wright, well, you mentioned it, that residents are on a budget. Well, so are owners. I've worked for a management company. It has to go someplace. When our utility bills go up, that's a legitimate expense and we pass it on. However, when fees go up, this a hundred dollars, in my mind, is not legitimate. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you. Next person to be recognized is Deontay Works. Next person to be recognized is Jacqueline Robinson. Next person to be recognized is Leslie Capper.
Um, so I also got a lot from my apartment complex and I didn't know a lot about it. I didn't know who implemented it, but I felt very violated.
Bring him back down.
Um, as a tenant of twenty years living in an apartment, I have no issues with my apartment. If I do, I write a letter, it gets taken care of. And I felt like this was just a ploy for the city to get more money because, um, if you, you aren't doing it to homes, I didn't understand why you were doing it when I came to. I actually submitted a letter to you and I got it off the close office and I said, who is doing this? Why are they doing this? And they said, well, it's because of the Sapphire incident. And I feel like if people have issues, they said that because of the Sapphire incident, that the city couldn't go in and do anything because there was no ordinance in place. And so that was how it came about. But I personally feel like I don't want somebody just randomly coming in. That's, even if you put it to the apartment complex, they are going to pass it on to us. And I just feel like it's a violation, period. So I know people that live in condos where their condo did not exist in Detroit, that their elevator didn't work for months and months and months and months. So it's not just a, a, you know, apartment issue or a condo issue. I mean, it is an issue. But if somebody has a complaint and they want to, if there's an ordinance in place that they have a complaint and they come to you, they invite you in, they welcome you in, great. But I don't think this random twenty percent, like he said, minimum, um, should, should be implemented. And I have a huge issue with that. So that is why I'm here today. So thank you.
All right, well, thank you. We will now recognize the mayor, Mrs. Cyberg.
Good evening, councilmen and members of the audience. First, for Mr. Foster, I would like to, like, this is two part clauses. Um, the council will close the ordinance on March twenty-sixth and then this evening will be the action ordinance. So, uh, there's no intent to confuse, but that's, with every ordinance, that's the basic place. I think the first two, as a longtime resident, I think the first two acknowledge that, uh, not every apartment complex has problems and not every landlord, um, is negligent. However, uh, when you sit in the seat that, that I sit in and the things that come to my office from, from tenants, um, it, I have just seen an increase in the kinds of complaints and also very punitive behavior. Uh, once again, this, this ordinance, um, it had been considered several times in the past and the apartment owners begged, uh, that the city council, different city councils than this one, um, give them the opportunity to take care of the, the issues. Uh, but in the intervening times, um, we have an aging housing stock. Um, and many of the buildings now are forty, fifty, uh, years old. They need work. Uh, and I, one of the differences, um, that I've noticed over the years is that originally, when, when these apartment buildings were built, the majority of them were built by, by local developers or local companies. And a number of the properties now are owned, uh, not by local people. Either they're, uh, out of the city or they're out of state. And in a number of cases, the out-of-state owners, um, and again, in my opinion, have milked the property and done the minimal on inspections. I can tell you, uh, some of the things that just, um, in the last six months, aside from the Sapphire, um, uh, and, you know, one of the people that is not here tonight, Jacqueline Robinson, um, on the list to speak, did text me and say that she was unable to come. But, uh, Ms. Robinson lived in an apartment house, um, called Ten Mile and there was mold in her apartment. And she, um, uh, couldn't get the management to do anything about the mold. Uh, she has asthma, so she hired an attorney. Uh, uh, the attorney then became a court case. The, the management then addressed the mold. Uh, so what happened to Ms. Robinson? She, um, had her lease terminated. So she moves to another Southfield apartment. Um, and at that apartment, there was an issue. And the management, the maintenance people came in, opened up the ceiling and never came back. She said, I'm paying thirteen hundred dollars a month and I have this big hole in my ceiling. Um, another case, um, apartment, a two-story apartment with a pink roof, um, this was several months ago. A woman calls me and says, there, um, there are raccoons in the attic of my apartment. Uh, I hear them scratching overhead. They're defecating over, over my, um, my bed. Um, uh, and she says, I live on the second floor. Why don't you go downstairs? The banister wiggles like this. Um, I said, well, this is a building issue. I will contact the building department and have somebody come out. Uh, the building department came out. Uh, the issues, um, I believe were addressed, except that a week later, um, the tenant called me and said, well, mayor, thank you so much for following up, um, on the, the issues that I reported to you, but my lease has been terminated. Um, another, another tenant asked, said, you've got to come over and see the condition in this apartment. Uh, and I, I said, okay, I'll come over. Basement windows are propped open, anybody can get in. There's some kind of jury rig, there's wiring through basement window, chicken bones on the, on the carpeting, uh, in the hall. Carpeting was disgusting. Um, and, um, you know, uh, and other things that I observed. Uh, on another apartment down off of Eight Mile, uh, you, uh, you could walk into any of the apartments because all the doors had been jamming and the locks didn't work. And again, the tenants did not feel safe. Uh, and the landlord said, we're not fixing these because every time we fix them, somebody breaks the lock. Um, and so, um, uh, again, when I visited the apartment, I just walked right in. I wasn't buzzed in, I walked in. Uh, and it wasn't the only, uh, there were several buildings. It wasn't the only building. Um, and then yet another apartment, a woman calls me and says, you know, landlord, wonderful things he's done. And these are all different apartments. Uh, all the different wonderful things that he's done. Sure, there was window replacements and landscaping improvements. But, um, she showed me pictures of her apartment, uh, overpainting, uh, heater coming off the wall. And then she tells me that she was given a rider to the lease and the rider was that she had to accept the apartment as, the apartment building as is. I'd never heard of such a thing. Um, in other words, if you don't like it, um, you can't complain about it because you've got to sign the rider, um, the rider to the lease. So again, I would acknowledge that not all, this is not the case. I don't hear from, um, every apartment complex. But these are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, um, that I, that I've heard from in the last, I'd say no more than six months. Um, again, we have done the same thing with rental homes in this community. We have, uh, following the mortgage crisis, we had a spike, a very significant spike in rental homes in the community. And we have, uh, had numerous complaints about landlords, uh, single-family homes that have not maintained their properties. And I will tell you, um, as long as I am mayor, I will not sit here and allow light and conditions in this community to decline. I have been here fifty years. When I came here in the mid-sixties, I taught in a brand-new school. I lived in a brand-new apartment at Moreland and the streets were new and, uh, it was a very progressive community. I was very happy to be here and I enjoyed working in Southfield Public Schools. Um, and there's something I talk about all the time and the council knows this. I talk about the Southfield standard. We will not allow standards to slip here. And while we have challenges with financing to do all the things that we need to do, earlier this evening, we looked at our capital improvement plan and there's much more that we need to do than we have the financing for. But we will not allow our neighborhoods to slip. And there's a lot of history about, uh, communities that have not kept up their residential communities. Without, uh, strong neighborhoods, strong apartment communities, we are lost. How are we going to attract people to, uh, to take up, um, corporate residencies here in our twenty-nine million square feet of, of office space if we do not have community, uh, residential communities that are places that people want to live that are safe and attractive, uh, and, um, are also looking out for the health of, of our residents? So, um, I applaud the council in taking up this, this ordinance. Um, I think it's overdue and, um, unfortunately, you can't pass an ordinance and say it applies to some apartment owners and not to others. So, um, we're here tonight. Uh, I hope that the council will enact the ordinance. And if it needs tweaking, uh, it can be tweaked as we go along. Uh, but this is a start. And further, um, we did invite the apartment, um, Association and I've attended a number of their events. Uh, there are, there are people in the apartment owners' association that, uh, I know they support, uh, good places to live and look out for their tenants. But I don't, uh, I certainly know that that's not the case in every single apartment. So, um, I certainly favor this, this ordinance and I hope that the council will enact it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And before that, we have one individual who was on the list, uh, arrived late. And we will recognize Mr. And we will recognize Mr. C.R. Ratcliffe. Yes, sir. You have three minutes. And before you start, I know a couple of individuals came in, but is there anyone here who registered and they were arrived late? Okay, well, I will call you after, Mr. Ratcliffe. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, I'm the council. Pardon us for being late, I have given the wrong time. Not to belabor some mistakes made because I wasn't present. I would just like to say that as a resident, a new resident of Southfield, just moved back to the area, that I would agree with an inspection process, but I would argue against the intrusion, my presumed intrusion of my residents at a twenty percent rate, random or however they decide to inspect premises. I myself believe it should be the responsibility of the city to create a vehicle, maybe an ombudsman's office, and make it available to the residents and based upon those complaints, the number of complaints, the level of complaints and arbitrary or random inspection of residents, it's other than out in the woods, that based on those complaints and inspection of property records, maintenance records, and someone familiar with the contracts of each apartment complex, that would suit better than a twenty percent inspection of residents. I myself would be a little angry for someone to come inspect my residence, you know, based on a number and without a complaint, when there are people who really need assistance, where there are some known complexes where they have problems. So that's just my recommendation and once again, I would welcome an inspection ordinance, but based on the ombudsman's office to where the residents of residential, or I'm sorry, apartment complexes would have a vehicle to report to if they are having problems with their communities.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, can you make your name and...
My name is Hala Nash. Do I press anything to start? Oh, okay.
What, third number?
Third one, why are we talking? Third one.
Hold on, hold on a second. One conversation, twenty, Mr. Nash. Go ahead.
I thought we started at seven, but anyway, I feel that it is class discrimination because I cannot afford a condominium or a house. I think it's an intrusion of my privacy. I think we're all guilty and we have to prove our innocence. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then. If there's no one else who has already signed up, we will recess this meeting. Hold on, hold on a second. Put it in there again.
I just wanted to...
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. President, we have a lot of people that signed up to speak specifically about this item. I think it would only be fair if we discussed the item now rather than later on in our meeting.
I support that.
I think it's only fair that everyone's here.
All right, well, all right, council, I will entertain a motion that will be... Madam Clerk?
It doesn't have to be a motion, it can just be a plain privilege, since you all, you can just get the consensus of the council, if anyone objects.
All right, well, we will get the consensus of the council. We will, you will have to discuss item number seven here, or would you prefer to recess back to the study chamber? And individuals who are, who would like to have this item number seven discussed here, please show your hands. One, two, three. Individuals who prefer to go...
Four.
Five.
Right here.
All right, four, okay, four is, we will discuss this item later. All right. The reason for this discussion will be the impact of ordinance number one six six one.
It's actually, Mr. President, one six nine two, we had a transposing of a number which was corrected. This ordinance is dealing with the apartments, is ordinance one six nine two.
We will now...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. There's a lot of comments from the audience on invasion of privacy. And I am very concerned about how our ordinance reads and that a manager can go into a certain particular one and go into the apartment. I think that I get a lot of letters and emails that that's one of the parts of the ordinance that, hey, most often say that it's just not good, it's just invasion of privacy to the point. So I understand the things that we're going through, that we've gone through before, reading the complaints on the way that the apartments are kept. However, I don't think there's anything in a present ordinance that stops us from holding the common areas and making sure that there's no violations. There's nothing stopping us from getting a hold of the Health Department and having them work with us to get them of this unhealthy situation straight. And so, you know, that's why this ordinance was hung up some years ago was because the owners felt that they could deal with it. And of course, Mayor is right, what's happened then over the years is that people are from out of state, they have no conscience of how to keep a place nice. They take the money and run and that's really what we're dealing with. But I still think that under our present laws, rules and regulations, that we still have the right to take these situations one by one and correct them with the ordinance and codes that we have today. And I'd like to know which ones of the codes that we need to approve that gives us the right to make a manager or owner fix the codes that they're violation of.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chris Chair. First of all, I want to say thank you tonight for everyone coming out and what's in your opinions, either for or against. We truly listen to you, as you know, that's why each one of you are here. We the council care about the city of Southfield. As our mayor has stated several times, we have a Southfield standard that everyone here adheres to. No matter if you're a tenant or a landlord, there are responsibilities that you have to adhere to. It's unfortunate that there has to be a fee in order for some people to comply with what needs to be done or that someone would take a fee and use that as a scare or fear tactic to say that if you don't pay this, you're going to be victim or we're going to do other things. I think that's wrong. And if you're a really truly good manager, like you say, and you don't have these issues, why would you threaten someone with that kind of information? It's not necessary because everyone is on the same level, the same plane, the same level playing field. The tenant wants the apartment and you want someone in it because an empty building serves no one. And I think that there should be someone, some way to come to an agreement that if you're not having problems, that's fine. Then we would not have to come into your property every single year, that wouldn't be necessary. And also with asking tenants to come into their apartments, I do believe we also said to you that there is a process where you can say no. Okay, well, maybe that's something we can revisit because if you don't want someone to enter your apartment, then that's something that we might want to take on with that, I don't know. But I just think that for the whole, the entire community, we're looking at your safety, your safety and your health and to have a community standard by which we all live by, whether you're in a home, in an apartment, in a condominium, it doesn't matter to us if you're in a business, whatever, we all are held to the same standard. And again, I just want to say thank you very much for coming out. Thank you for sharing your thoughts and your opinions and how you feel with everything. We do listen and we do care. And if there is things that need to be tweaked, we will do that as well. We will definitely discuss them and make the best, do what's best for the residents and the tenants here in the city of Southfield. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, go on. Yes, thank you. The, as many of you heard, the reason that we have, we've thought about this ordinance and that it's been, we've kicked the can down the road for a number of years. We have many concerns from residents about many different apartment complexes. Yes, we have some apartment complexes that have no issues that we've heard about or no issues at all, but there are issues in many of our apartment complexes. You know, we were notified about issues with cracked windows, cracked paint, carpet peeling up, no heat, no hot water, and many other different complaints. This ordinance complements, as the mayor mentioned, the existing vacant home and rental home ordinances as it relates to inspections and it's a very similar ordinance to many other surrounding communities. And it was drafted to ensure the health, safety and welfare of our tenant residents. We have a goal here as the mayor, council, city administration to maintain Southfield as a safe, attractive and vibrant city. And hopefully, this ordinance will help make that a reality for some people who are having some of these issues. And for the apartment owners, I know some people spoke that they have no issues. They provide excellent service to their tenants. Thank you for providing that service. Unfortunately, there's no way that we can pick and choose which apartment to be inspected. And I think that this is the best way to make sure that every Southfield resident has an opportunity to have their apartment inspected whether they request it or it's random. Thank you.
Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, I had a question with attorney, just going back to that piece. As soon as I recall, I thought when we talked about this before, that a tenant could refuse their unit to be inspected and we could go to another unit until we got to the twenty percent.
I think there might be a little bit of a misunderstanding. My understanding of what the building department indicated was that obviously, they need to get to the twenty percent. So if they knocked on a door and somebody wasn't there or said, "I, you know, I'm not in agreement with this," the building department at that point, under the current ordinance, would have two choices. One, seek to have a search warrant issued by the court. That's the only way that they can get in without the approval of the tenant. Or two, if, you know, they're getting their inspections and, you know, they're not having an overall problem, maybe they would just go to the next unit. But that's a whole different subject than saying a tenant has the right to opt out. The general thrust of the ordinance is that, and it's very clearly compatible with state law, that if a tenant refuses, that there is a potential for a search warrant to be issued by the court. That's the protection for the tenant, that the city in that case would have to make out a basis for why they want to come into a unit without the consent of the tenant in that case. But there is nothing in the ordinance that is this opt-out or this, "I don't want to participate." That, that is just not a part of that ordinance. Because the, again, the potential would be if everybody says, "I just don't want somebody in my apartment," you're, the whole ordinance would in fact be rendered moot because nobody would participate.
Okay, I appreciate your clarification, so. And I just was saying along this, I mean, this, I think the council has done its due diligence on this matter. It's gone through legislative committees, it's gone through the whole council, it's received its support. We've gotten feedback from residents and otherwise, so I don't know where the council is. I'd like to move the ordinance sixteen ninety-two to be enacted if the council has supported that.
It's been moved by Mr. Cruz, it's supported by Mr. Chair, that what is...
Point, just a point of order. We are really not, we are still in the study session, so we really do need to have a rule.
Oh, we have to...
Right.
Oh, we still have another conference. Okay, all right, hold on a second. All right, we have to, let me recognize this. Mr. Frazier, first, you want to go ahead?
Mr. President?
Technically, we can get, we can have the motion on the floor and then discuss it afterwards on the floor.
Technically, we need to rescind that motion because we need a rule ten.
Because, yes, we have to say.
So I just need for Dr. Cruz to rescind his original motion. Overdraw your motion.
Okay, well, I would draw, I would draw the motion.
Motion, draw.
Then move for a rule ten or do you want to have a discussion first?
Well, let's have a discussion first and just get that out of the way. Mr. Frazier? I was on council when we attempted to write the ordinance, it was years ago. And it was because of a similar situation that we experienced in this past winter with Sapphire. There was an apartment complex that was just terrible. And when we started to write the ordinance, the apartment managers and owners came in, "Oh, no, 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 don't do, you know, don't do that. We, you know, we're going to take care of this." So we backed off, put the thing on the shelf and we didn't, we didn't do it. Kicked the can down the road. And for a while, it was quiet and then it popped up again. So that's why we wrote this ordinance. So that would give us the authority to go in and make sure that the apartment, individual apartments are safe and clean and for the apartment owners, for the apartment renters. Now, there's been a number of people that have talked about, "I don't want you coming into my apartment." The reason that we want to come into your apartment is not to find out whether you're a messy housekeeper. That is not the case at all. We're going to look past that. We're going to find out if you have dangerous things, windows that are leaking crack. In some apartments, so far, we have found that in bathrooms, the toilets haven't been fastened down and they wobble when you set them the toilet. But more importantly, the reason that we're going in is for your benefit. Because as the mayor outlined in his, in his little discussion a few minutes ago, in some apartment complexes, if the apartment dweller complains and has someone come in, they get kicked out of the apartment. We want to take that off your shoulders. If there are problems in your apartment, the prob, we will absorb that cost. So you're out of it. You're, if you're one of the twenty percent, it won't be because you've invited us in to find out what was wrong. We have randomly, and it was a statistical sample, so it's just by chance that your apartment was picked. But it's for your benefit and you won't get blamed for it because you didn't call us and say, "Come in and look at my apartment." And then your apartment manager takes retribution on you and cancels your lease and throws you out, ruins your credit, so you can't go get another apartment someplace else. So it's to your benefit that we're doing this. And to the attorney that was complaining about the minimum of twenty percent. We only intend to do twenty percent. However, if we start finding problems, we will go beyond the twenty percent to find out how bad the situation is. So when we say a minimum of twenty percent, our goal is to do only twenty percent. And that's more than enough. To the people that have complained about, we're doing it because it's a money maker. It is not a money maker. We're not allowed to make a profit on this. We only are getting back the cost of what it is for our employees to come up and do the inspections to make sure that you have a safe and healthy environment to live in. So, and the other, the other comment that I made note on is a lady that said, "The cost of tomatoes is two dollars a pound. If they go up to twenty dollars a pound, the cost is going to get passed on." That's true, it may get passed on, but the next person that buys tomatoes doesn't pay twenty dollars a pound. It's, everybody shares in the problem. And I'm not suggesting that they have... And I'm not suggesting that the apartment owners, uh, pass it on. Our intention is, that's a cost of doing business, that's a cost of maintaining a safe, clean, healthy environment for your renters, and that's the cost of doing a business that you should absorb, not passing out to your renters. So that's, that's all I got.
Um, Ms. Morris.
Yeah, yes, I too, um, want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, those who supported the ordinance, uh, those who did not. Um, we, I concur with all the council that we, um, you know, believe it is important to, um, make sure that we protect our residents' health, safety, uh, and welfare, um, for our residents. We want to make sure our city stays vibrant and attracts new, um, people as well. Uh, but this is not new. Um, there are several cities that are like size and residential capacity like ours that already have ordinances like these. So, uh, we appreciate you for coming tonight, and we will continue to fight on your behalf.
Okay, um, with respect to privacy, I just want to touch base on that. I did talk to the building department about this particular issue. Actually, we would, uh, we get approval, the initial process would, uh, would be approval process. And our building department is flexible enough to be there when the tenants are there, and at our last meeting, our building department indicated that they will be available on the weekend. So this will be, they are being extremely flexible, um, and as previously stated, it will be a scientific sample of 20%. And if, in that 20%, if we are getting bad results, we will improve it up to a certain, another percentage point. Because in scientific sampling, there are, you scientifically sample, so you do not have to sample 100%. But if you're getting problems, you go, you move with any scientific, uh, anyone that deals with scientific sample, know that you will go up to 100% if you have to. We get a lot of problems there. But the big takeaway from what I just said was that our building department will be flexible, deal with the tenants, and working around their schedule, and also, it'll be our desire that a building official will accompany our building inspectors when we go through doing the inspection. So it'll be a total transparency process, it's nothing, has nothing to do with, uh, trying to invade your privacy. So, council, any other comments?
Uh, can I get a rule ten? Uh, move the rule ten for purpose of enacting ordinance sixteen ninety-two.
Support.
It's been moved and supported that we enact a rule ten for the purpose of enacting ordinance number sixteen sixty-one.
Ninety-two.
Sixteen ninety-two. Sixteen ninety-two. Sixteen ninety-two. Sixteen ninety-two. All in favor?
Aye. Aye, aye.
I'm opposed. I just wanted, I just wanted the record to indicate that, um, I don't think this should be a rule ten, and this should be done in a more politicized, regular council meeting.
Okay, you object, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on the local.
Yes, everyone.
Yes. I said it at the, uh, discussion meeting that we had, I really believe that we have the codes, we have the health departments, how we like, to take care of the situation that we presently have. I think that, um, there's 14,000 units in the city. We have a home information center that, as you'll pass, it's going out the doors, that have, what, eight pages, both sides, of apartment complexes that are available and places that are paid. I think that if, if you don't like the, the apartments that you're in, there's choices. At the same time, you know, if I were to speak for myself, if I walked into an apartment complex and I seen that the rugs were dirty and, and there's garbage all over the place, no landscaping, I guess I'd pass it by. Sooner or later, those apartment owners will take care of the place and roll out of business. And, um, I just think that's a choice that you make. I really am opposed to, to any, anybody who comes into my facility, my home, and I just think that it's the wrong thing to do. Even, you know, like I said, you'd say, they get a warrant, they come up with 20%, I give all of these research. And I just don't agree with that.
All right, we have a rule ten on the floor. All in favor of-
Sorry, you're on topic. Impacts. Impacts.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Did I move that with ordinance sixteen ninety-two be enacted?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. All in favor? No. We have one known. All right, aye, aye. Ordinance number sixteen ninety-two is enacted. All right, with that, we will recess into the study chamber to deal with the items around here. We will now move into the following items. Item number one is no longer on the agenda. Item number two, Mr. Mayor, you want to take that?
Yeah, I'll, uh, start. Um, everyone remembers, um, when we had the Smooth Jazz concert on the lawn of the Southfield Civic Center, uh, up front here, and it was a wonderful event, and we had, um, a couple thousand people come. Uh, it was, it was a ticketed event. You may remember that, um, uh, the whole front lawn, a fence went up, uh, that was tarp, and, um, I believe, if I am remembering correctly, I could be a little off, but it seemed to me something like it was $36, uh, to, to attend, uh, the jazz festival. There was, uh, it was put on by Smooth Jazz. Uh, it was a very nice event, um, people enjoyed it. Uh, Smooth Jazz is no more. Um, there, there were also, uh, apparently, uh, some issues that, um, costs exceeded, uh, the ticket revenue. I know that, um, they had, um, between the fencing, uh, and then they had, uh, cashier, cashier stations and so on. So there was a whole number of expenses that were built into, uh, putting on the festival, um, beyond, uh, the staging, the lighting, the sound, the, um, performers, and so on. So, uh, for a number of years have, have gone by, and people keep talking about that, that have that happy memory of the jazz festival, why can't we have it back? And so, um, uh, I had had the opportunity to, um, hear, uh, probably 15 years ago, Kimmy Horn, uh, first time I, uh, attended one of her performances, and, um, just thought, wow, this lady really can sing, uh, and brings a lot of excitement. And then, um, um, we reconnected over, um, several art events that, uh, Dolores Flag, um, and Kimmy attended, and we got talking, and, uh, we had talked about having, um, a Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival at the Southfield Civic Center last year, but, um, we decided that because the Martin Luther King Task Force was thinking about putting something on that we would pass, um, and so, um, they, uh, in the meantime, uh, Kimmy Horn Productions put on the jazz festival, uh, at, um, behind Lethrav School on Southfield Road, and, uh, it was very well attended. Uh, I went both la, uh, last year and the year before, um, and, um, uh, Kimmy would like to come to Southfield. They've outgrown the space behind Lethrav School, and, um, they don't have adequate parking. So what we're proposing, uh, is that, um, uh, just something, uh, an agreement similar to, um, what the agreement with Lethrav Village. Um, Lethrav Village picked up a certain number of expenses for the event, and, um, Kimmy Horn Productions brings in a whole package, uh, including, um, and it's in your, um, packet if you, uh, want to turn to that page, but, um, the, um, uh, the things are outlined there, and we'll have to read them if everybody's got the page in front of them, but, uh, anyhow, these are the things that she's responsible for. She brings the whole package, uh, and, uh, on the reverse side of the letter that's in your packet are the things that the city will be responsible for. Now, in talking with, um, uh, Cost and Terry Fields from Parks and Rec, there are some things that, uh, really are no cost to the city. Um, for instance, the golf carts or the walkie-talkies. We have, uh, a tent. Um, Fields thinks that we might be able to borrow, uh, a tent from Oakland County Parks and Rec, uh, if we give them enough, um, notice. And then there are things that would have to be, um, we'd have to spend money on, uh, as did Lethrav Village. So, um, we are proposing, uh, to cover the cost of the concert rather than charge to a tent, that we would have a $10 fee for what we call VIP parking, which would be parking on city-owned property. And it'll be $10 per car, very similar to if you go to Suburban Showplace, um, I went to the Shrine Circus, I, I had to pay 10 bucks to park over there. Um, even so, I had passes from the Shriners, um, and it's, it's just a way of covering our cost, and any money that is left over would, um, we propose, would go to, uh, the Public Art Fund. By my estimate, um, just to finish, um, the restoration placement of the Northland Art Fund, we'll need about another $120,000. Um, the pieces that are, every piece that, that is left needs some kind of restoration. And, uh, for instance, we just placed, um, the Etrog piece. That was, uh, roughly, uh, I believe, $6,000. Uh, to get that there, restore it and repair it, um, we just placed on March thirty, thirtieth, the, um, Crowd, uh, at, um, uh, the piece from Northland and, and the lease with Town Center. That was, um, fifty, uh, 5,400, 5,500 dollars to place it there. Uh, these pieces are heavy, and that needed just a little restoration work, but it had to have a, a new base fabricated, and then to lift it inside the Town Center, they had ran a portable crane, um, that was disassembled and then assembled in the lobby just to move it. So, I mean, uh, I point out all these things because our art collection, um, is expensive, and, uh, as you know, uh, we had to cut back on our original plan for the Red Poll Park. Uh, we would like to raise money for that as well, for phase two of the, of the, uh, the Red Poll Park. So, um, we're looking at, at covering costs, uh, recovering costs for putting on this concert. It is free. Um, the Chamber of Commerce would operate a beer and wine tent, and the Martin Luther King Task Force, um, president approached me about, uh, selling of wine and, or rather, water, and, uh, soft drinks, um, as a, uh, for, uh, for the benefit of their efforts. So, um, Kimmy is here tonight, uh, she's kind of incognito. Usually, um, she, she's got the hair going on, but, um, I would, um, if you want to come up and say a few words, um.
Okay.
And, uh, Kimmy, uh, our protocol is to name and address for the record.
Name and, and address, okay. Okay. Kimmy Horn, um, I am 18187 Abella, um, in Lethrav Village. As Ken, um, mentioned, um, this festival for the, um, last two years was in Lethrav Village. It was extremely successful. Both years, it rained, and both years, everyone stayed for the festival. I mean, just to give you an idea, that people were really, um, ready for an outdoor event. Um, this, my, I consider my festival something, um, unique because it is like a boutique festival, and I say that meaning that it's, um, it's kind of intimate, you know, and I love the word that you used earlier when you said standards, high standards, because that's exactly what, you know, I wanted to oversee the entire festival in terms of, um, director. Uh, my manager is a, um, festival organizer with me, and we work as a team, but it was important to make sure that involved everyone that, um, that we knew would be, um, beneficial to being positive to being in the team. Because, um, starting out and just not having any idea what it was going to, um, develop to be is, um, I wouldn't say is risky, but it was, um, it was challenging, but it was a wonderful challenge and a, and a great journey. And so, um, because last year, um, the parking, it was, um, extreme, um, parking, you know, everywhere, and then we just started to see that, gosh, we're, we're outgrowing, um, the villagey, you know, concept. And so, um, I remember many years ago performing out here at the Civic Center for the jazz festival. Um, I performed there, so I think in terms of just kind of bringing the Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival and plugging it into, um, Southfield already, I have been getting so many, um, great comments from people just saying, oh my God, that's, it's spread out, it's, that would be so much better. You know, I think in terms of, um, sponsors, um, I do have sponsors that are interested. Um, I have, um, several sponsors that have been supportive and behind me for the last two years, from the very beginning, from Bossy Lincoln as the, um, spokesperson for, um, Lincoln, um, MGM Grand, St. John Hospital, um, DTE, you know, again, they are all, um, exercising, um, interest again to participate. Um, with the staging, the production, um, because I have had, um, production experience and, and putting a show together, um, I've had the great pleasure actually of traveling all around the world, so again, that's why I wanted to inject some of these personal things, um, like, um, you know, the vendor trucks, um, like the, um, the, some, some of the vendors, you know, because it is a boutique festival, and so I think that there should always be some kind of little jewelry or something to, or hats or glasses or something to add to the mix, you know? Yeah, sunglasses, I mean, just not a whole lot of things, and not all saturated, but something just to have different, um, different areas where everything can be from food, drinks, um, jewelry, and of course, entertainment. I've already secured and talked to, um, different performers that want, would love to be involved again, and so, you know, that is a, that's a very positive thing. It's now trying to decide who we're going to say no to, you know, but really, people are wanting to be involved. Um, the, you know, the relationships have been established with, um, stage managers, um, staging, um, people, professionals that put up the banners, um, put up stage lighting, uh, risers, backline here is all listed there, but I'm just reading off some of them because, you know, again, it's just to help share that it's a, um, it's a tight system, you know, it's well-developed, it's worked over the years, over the last two years, we were able to tweak, I mean, by having a DJ, which is also unique for a jazz festival because that first hour that the festival opens, he plays the music and it's easy listening jazz or upbeat jazz to, um, invite people into this atmosphere, to this ambiance of, um, you know, of family fun and, and safety, you know, and that's what, that was one of the prior, um, the really priorities of the, um, of the jazz festival.
Okay.
I would just add one thing. So why this is on the study session agenda this evening is because, um, as with anything we do on the front lawn, I'm taking the lead from our city attorney, uh, these are the parameters for the contract. Uh, if the council's supportive, then, um, we would direct Ms. Ward to, um- to draft a contract between the City of Southfield and Kimmy Horn Productions.
In order with our Robert's Rules of Order class, all comments come to the chair.
Through the chair. Ms. Horn, I just wanted-
Glad you're sorry somewhere.
I just wanted to say that, of course, thank you for considering bringing your show to Southfield. I've been on this every show we have, I love you to death. But I also wanted to say that this is Southfield's 60th year. This is our 60th anniversary. Maybe something else you think about while you're here? Yes. So maybe you can tie that plug in Southfield, some kind of way, you know? That would help Southfield be remembered 60 years-
I think that is amazing, you know? Thank you for sharing that because I'm all about celebrating and incorporating whatever, you know, positive and things to be celebrated, to add that into the whole concept of the journey that really will take, you know, will take everyone on. Yes.
Any other, Mr. Frazer was first.
Would you ask her a question? You have, you need 150 chairs, is that enough?
You know, we, with, see, what I was looking at is because, you know, coming from Lathir Village, of course, it's apples and oranges to here. So it's kind of like a guesstimation, you know? But I think that it may vary, it may vary, but we just had to have a, some kind of a starting point. And again-
This doesn't seem like it's enough, right?
Yeah, that, yeah.
The kind of folks that I know are going to be out here.
Yes, but the 150 chairs are there for the VIP area. So it will be a VIP- Yeah, so everyone will bring their own chairs. And there'll be a VIP section, and that will be for the sponsors that get involved in different packages and what they get, from VIP chairs to VIP tents, where they'll be able to have food and whatnot, and just have a different kind of, you know, different kind of experience.
Okay, thanks.
Good question.
Mr. Focassi. It's a big, you had so many water on the fire, but, you know, we have a noted amount that when you reach the front yard, it's $15,000. That's the going rate, and has been for a long time. But the, the city to sell tickets, I mean, I just think that isn't a big expense. It calls for police, walkie-talkies, fencing, generators. This is, this is the city's portion of signage, portable signage. I mean, all these things are pretty tight. And I just think that, I don't mind the festival, but I think that we follow the rules of the game, and that's $15,000 to use the front lawn. And that covers police department, it covers everything else that includes it. I know that maybe in Lathir Village, but when you talk about 150 people, that isn't much. But talking 3,000, that's a big job. And I know that the police department's going to have to be here. Public Works is going to be here for putting up, there, how do you call it? There's things for the street, directing traffic. I mean, I mean, this, I apologize, but this is, this coming to Southfield is a big, that, that meaning it's a big city, it's bigger than Lathir, but the cost is something that produces to, maybe is the front lawn. It's like everybody else has, you know, this one that comes out, and the Caldeans, when they had their festival here, they had everything, the rides and everything else, and they paid $15,000, we held them to it. And I think if you change your rules, you know, you change your rules, and I just don't believe in that.
I, my thought, my perspective is that, you know, I would be coming in and it would be a partnership. There are costs for, you know, in terms of getting sponsors. You know, I think that that's a, you know, I have to say that I definitely would need the help and the support of the City of Southfield as well to work with me because it is a huge-
I know that, one of the things, we have the budget coming up. We had a million and a half dollars in overtime for our police department, you know? I mean, that's substantial. And when you bring in the police department to cover these events, you know, somebody has to pay for that. And like I said, they had a million and a half dollars in their budget, and went over another million and a half. So, you know, we pay our officers and insurance and everything? No, I don't know insurance, isn't even in here, is it? I didn't see insurance. I didn't see insurance.
That would be included in the contract, we would deal with insurance, I'm sure that's something that-
Okay.
Yeah, but generators, the first page isn't bad, but when you look at the second page, you're talking heavy duty, and I just can't go along with it.
Sorry? Excuse me about a second, Mr. Zoh, you want to leave?
The Caldean Festival was literally a straight-up where they rented the front lawn, and they had all certain responsibilities and insurance. And I'm trying to remember a couple of the others. Then, and this is viewed as more of a joint sponsorship. We've outlined the parameters, then, the artist brings to the table what she's responsible for. We're saying the Arts Commission will sell parking, and you'd have to offset some of these items online too. And then under fiscal impact, they have identified a line item to cover certain, you know, if we have public safety costs and traffic costs. And there's also an internal dialogue going on about a different direction with our emergency management group, about having them more engaged in these events. Other communities have cert teams that are in that. But we talked about this with the LTU games and the other things. We need to start figuring this out, that if we want to put these community events on, how can we have a group of, or you go to an event in Novi, you go to an event in Dearborn, it's auxiliary police and the cert people. There, yes, there are still sworn officers on board, and we will have those as we go through this event. But that's why we identified that line item to cover that.
But you can, and I don't mean, could you do, take this chart and give some estimates of cost? That would be-
That's part of the exercise we'll be going through.
Are you talking about the porta-johns and that list there?
Walkie-talkies, junior police chairs.
Counselman, I went through that list and got some prices. So, for instance, the porta-johns are about $1,100. We're looking at getting an in-kind donation to the Oakland County 40x40. But if we don't, it's about $1,200. We've got 20x20 tent, but that goes for about $256. The next three items are all in-kind, trash bins, we have golf carts, we have walkie-talkies. I can't speak to emergency management. We've got some rental costs for the tables and the chairs, but it's pretty minimal. It's got 200 for 150 chairs, 200 for eight-round tables, $150 for a 14 eight-foot rectangular. If the fencing is similar to summer solstice in that beer tent, we have that. That's something that Parks and Recreation can do. We're working with Kimmy on looking at generators, the type of generators that she needs. Some of the ones that we use for Eat to the Beat, larger generator, quiet, it's about $750 for three hours. That's not necessarily what Kimmy's going to need. There's other generators, we have a couple of generators as well. So, most of these costs will be able to keep down except for, except for that generator cost, but that, that in turn still may be, may be less. I'm not quite sure, food trucks, that's an ongoing, you know, conversation. And we're going to have to have some more, Shriek and I and my rec ops person are going to get together tomorrow actually and talk about process for vendors, food trucks, so that that can go smoothly. And then the designated area for the artists, that's simply working with Kimmy to be able to logistically take a look at what the, what our front lawn will look like aesthetically, how you feel when you walk up to it, where the stage is, where our vendors are at, easy walkthrough. And Kimmy's got a lot of experience in that, and we have Parks and Recreation as well. So, I think it's going to be, I respect your, I respect your comments, but I think it's really going to be an opportunity to bring some great music here. You'll see Parks and Recreation really lifting their game with our concert series on the front lawn. We're going to be working with Alexander Zancheck in July. So, July and August to have, to have these two very large events or very large pieces of music and entertainment and experience here, I think is really a great opportunity for us. It will come with some hard work. I know that in the past, you've heard us talk about us, Parks and Recreation, being able to support some of these really key community events. Project Manhood was just here. That, that, that kind of event, to be able to support that, we've been able to use that $125,000 that you, we're able to move into that Parks and Recreation budget so we can continue to say yes for opportunities like this. It's a risk for Kimmy, it's a risk for us, that is true. But it's a, it's a pretty good risk. I think that, I think our city staff will certainly do a great job. And I just think it's a really, really great opportunity for us and for the residents.
If I can just make it clear, the reason for this discussion now is well enough to authorize the attorney to draw up an agreement. This is not to finalize anything, so the final decision will be made at a point in time when the agreement-
Right, we would bring that back.
Bring it back, so-
We were asking for Mayor clerk to sign.
Oh, you are asking for that, oh, oh.
Maybe I got ahead of myself on the draft.
I just assumed that, you know, we would draft something and then we could bring the complete parameters back to council and have them approve the agreement, but I-
You know, I'm fine with that as long as it's relatively soon.
Sure, oh absolutely, we'll get going on a draft.
Because, for instance, we are confirming sponsors.
Right, right.
We need to know that we're going to go ahead with this. Right now, the most critical thing is the sponsorships. And I've talked to some people who are willing to support the event. Kimmy has recurring people who've supported her year after year. And to Mr. Focassi's point, I did not see this as Kimmy Horn coming and renting the lawn. This is a joint venture, and we don't, when we do a joint sponsorship, we don't charge for the lawn. We're, we are-
We're benefiting from-
We're benefiting this, and, and you know, I know if the city planner were here, these things are important for us to sell Southfield. We have support from the City Center Advisory Board for this. I can't tell you how many residents are looking forward to this. I do very much see it as a 60th anniversary event. You know, and thank you for bringing it up because I didn't mention it to Kimmy, but as you know, it was in the State of the City address. And we're, we're hoping to, we will charge for vendors to, you know, I'm not big on having people come and sell Anderson windows, which you sometimes see at concerts. I've never bought anything other than something to eat at a concert. But nonetheless, there are people that like that. We were going to, the food vendors would be charged, the proceeds from the beer and wine tent, and that's the only fencing, and that's by state requirements, liquor control, that you have to have a fence around the beer tent. It's modest amount of, same thing we did at summer solstice. So, I, you know, again, I see this as a partnership, a great opportunity. And our city planner, you know, all of the things that we're doing, it's about promoting Southfield, and that's important, we need to do it. That exciting things happen here, there's a reason to come to Southfield. And then there's the spill-off of other economic activity, whether people are eating across the street or getting a hotel room or gas station, dollar store, whatever they're doing. So, these things are important. And again, as the city manager said, the Caldean Festival was their thing. It was not city-sponsored, it was out on the street, and this is not the same thing.
Mr. Motherwell. I think this is a good idea, I just have a couple of questions on the logistics. So for example, parking, we're going to charge $10 for parking, but there's going to be people who want to go to the library versus the-
And we're not chasing anybody for, you know, you're going to the library, you're going to the golf course. And I've already told you this on the phone, that when you asked the question before, that we're not going after people. This is a fun event. I'm not, you know, the Art Commission are going to be the ticket, you know, the, take the money for the parking fees, and the cert people are going to do traffic control. So, you know, if somebody's golfing, they're here. And we're not going to go, oh, well, now you're here and you need to pay. We're not going to follow that.
Okay, then, the fee will go to offset the costs. So, there's an extra line item, I see from Parks and Rec Community Promotions. But that's only used if the $10 fee doesn't cover everything else. Or is there going to be a portion used? I'm just, based on the wording, I just want to understand how. Because I understand, you know, it's part of fundraiser for MLK, for the Chamber, and the Public Arts Commission, which I'm fine with. I'm just trying to understand how that will be divvied up.
Well, the Martin Luther King, whatever they sell-
They get.
They get.
You say selling tickets, I'm sorry.
No, they're-
Where are you going to get that from?
They're going to bring their water and their pop and sell it. I mean, that's, that's going to be their thing.
Okay.
The Chamber is going to get the liquor license. They will pay for the setup of the beer wine tent. And they will get a percentage, which I haven't totally worked out with Tanya, Mar, Tanya, sorry. Tanya, Marcos, but there'll be a percentage that comes, it's self-supporting, those two, two things.
Okay.
And then to add the vendors.
Then there are other vendors, yeah.
The vendors, please, because all of those things-
We do a food truck charge.
Right, but I guess, what I'm trying to figure out, the parking goes, it says here, the excess parking revenues will serve as a fundraiser for the Public Arts Commission.
If there are any.
If, right, that was my question, so if there's none, then the Public Arts Commission is just not allowed? Yeah.
They understand the risk.
Okay.
And they've agreed to be at the driveways on city property and collect the parking fees.
Now, will we also need extra code enforcement or the parking enforcement to make sure that they're not, people aren't parking on private property and causing an issue on those streets?
Our answer to that is that we will notify every property owner up and down Evergreen that this event is taking place, that we're charging to park on city property. If they want to charge to park on their property, for instance, the, well, either down, either the food places up and down the street, if those landlords want to charge, fine. If not, you know, I've gone to, again, Suburban Showplace a number of times. I see people walking from neighborhoods, they'll walk a half a mile or more because they all want to pay that $7 or that $10 fee, fine. You know, we're, we're not, we're taking this to another level. We're not, you know, going to get into quibbling over, you know, whether you paid or not. But we are granted the courtesy to notify the property owners on Evergreen Road that this event is happening and that people may, more than likely, there'll be people that don't want to pay to park, and will park someplace else and walk in.
Okay, good time.
This is going. Staff will, will go, will come back and will also, when this comes back to council, prepare for public safety costs. But I really would like council to recognize, we are having a very different conversation about emergency management. And we know that in order to do these events and that, our biggest hurdle in the past has been our public safety cost. We need to give it a different thought and another conversation, and what can we do? We need to give it a different thought, and another conversation is what can we do with our emergency preparedness group? Can we create a community emergency response team, or SURG, or Arcville? And even as LGE puts their games together, we know we're gonna have the same issue there. So, we've gotta start figuring this out, or otherwise, we'll just become one of these communities that can't, you know, will be forever, we can't afford it, we can't afford it. There will be some professional staff there, but we'll have to be more reliant on volunteers to make these things happen in the future.
And as I've, one minute, as I've stated before when we had a discussion about this, this is a good product for the Southfield brand, and this is the first year, and this will, I hate to say like a dry run, but we will learn a lot from this first year event. And the costs are covered in the Parks and Rec Community Promotion Budget. So, the costs are there, they're covered. But the main thing of it is, this has to get off the ground, get off the block, and it will be a learning, a learning process, but it's a very calculated learning process. We're not just jumping out of the box without any planning. There's been planning, thought, and we have covered all the known, let's say, adversities. And we're gonna minimize those adversities. And the way it looks right now, be minimal harm, if any, to the city. It'd be a plus to the city from a standpoint, we have another event during this summer that draws the families out, is another reason to live in Southfield. So, this is, and I've indicated that it's a, maybe you'd term dry run, but the first time out the box, there will be lessons learned in all-
It's a program.
Pilot program. That's one way.
I saw it.
But, Miss, Mr.-
Okay.
Through the chair.
Through the chair. And I'm the only one that's saying through the chair. Okay, so I'm being respectful, through the chair. I think we should really play up the 60th anniversary. We're talking about all these vendors up and down Evergreen. If we tell them, this is our 60th anniversary, they will be more than happy to participate. They may even put up banners, offer discounts, have people coming in and out, they'll be open. I think it would be a win-win, I think it would be great. This is a great way to celebrate our 60th.
That's right. Through the chair.
If I may, through the chair.
I have sat through probably six, seven different proposals in my time here, with different groups all proposing to do concerts. No one has brought together a package with so much. Everyone else is always looking for the city to drop 50, 60. You sat through enough of these, 50, 60, $100,000, or you. No one has brought this much to the table. And that's where this one is really different. And I know our Parks and Rec Director is working on another one, and she's got other partners coming to the table that are making these two big concerts happen. And I think we're really fortunate, but, you know, I, there's gotta be a half dozen of them both have said, and no one has brought this much to the table.
All right, I wanna get council agreement that we've moved this on to drafting the agreement with the parties.
Rule 10.
Through the chair.
Well, just a consensus?
This is, we're not approving this tonight, we're just asking them to draw up the agreement, and once we have the agreement, then we'll approve the agreement.
And I would, I would say, I would shoot for the April 30th, because I don't think we have it done in a week, which was next week. And then we don't have a meeting on the 23rd, so I'll commit, we'll have this worked out by the 30th and back in front of you. Is that timing-wise, does that work?
Okay.
Anybody?
Yeah, we'll make it.
Okay, okay.
All right, all in agreement?
I'm through the chair, I wanna say something.
Go ahead.
I agree with Lenny that if you're gonna do it, I mean, a 60th would be a great time to expose the 60th anniversary. The other point I wanna make is, you know, you're gonna have to have a life support unit here, too.
All in agreement that this, you, well, it's approved that they, you go forward and draft up the documents, and then we will deal with them later. It's gonna be a good event.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, I feel it already. Can you write a song to that? Southfield 60th, what's your green hour then?
I'll sing this one, if you want. She plays, I'll be three people from the council, I'll come up with a new background. Come in.
We'll be agreed on that.
Come in, come in. It'll be easy.
The church voice.
All right.
Choir.
So, all we need on item number three is just the agreement that we will cancel the May 7th.
This would be a rule 10.
Yes.
Okay, let me, let me just look over the next three, four items here.
They're all rule 10s.
All these, okay, so, I brought this up before. We will just get one rule 10, and we will deal with each one of these under that rule 10 event. Is that, is that normal?
I mean, if, yeah, if the motion is, these are the council rules. So, if the motion is that the council is finding, as a resolution here, to do, to find an immediate need to act on numbers three, four, five, and six, I think you can do it. It's not at law, it's your own resolution.
I agree.
I've never named a lady before, it's okay, so I might have made a mistake. I have a rule 10 for the cancellation of the city council meeting scheduled for May 7th, 2018, and November 5th, 2018, for the proposed purchase agreement for the former Montgomery Ward Automotive Services property at former Northland Mall, to authorize a budget adjustment to water service connection and water and sewer maintenance services contract, ALI construction, and to authorize the purchase, setup, and installation of retrofit PLC control panel for Evergreen Hills Golf Course Irrigation Park.
Support.
Okay, move on, Mrs. Mars, that we have a rule 10, and supported by Mr. Cruz.
I'd like to have-
Good rule.
You gotta get a vote on that rule 10.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fercassi, you got a question?
Rule 10, I'd like to pull this water service connection. Well, you guys, you know, go ahead and do your stuff, you know, I'm getting, and you're talking about taking money out of four accounts, four accounts, and come up with 200, $747,000, you know, and take it out of four accounts, you know, you're taking $10,000 in one account, one out of 15, another account, another out of some other account. You don't even show balance in what's left in the account to begin with.
Okay, so really-
I mean, it's just, you're playing with people's money, you know, this is crazy.
The question's on the floor, we had the motion, the question's on the floor. We will pull item number five for the discussion.
There's, actually, there's really room, because they have to, we're only gonna do a rule 10 for these four items.
Right.
We have to act on each one individually.
Yes.
There'll be plenty of time for discussion when we get to the fourth one, once the issue is on the table.
Okay, all right. Now, the rule 10 is approved?
No, you didn't vote.
All right, all in favor of rule 10?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I have it. We are into rule 10. Discussion item number three.
Basically, at the beginning of my tenure as city clerk, the yearly schedule was already made when I came into office. After further discussion and investigation, it was just not a best practice to have council meetings right before an election day, specifically for our May and November election, because we need to securely execute and make sure all of our election equipment is secure, which it will be in this room and the city council chambers. So, I'm just honorably asking for this council to cancel those two meetings so we can be in compliance with just best practices with election conduct.
Okay. Mr. President.
This is Mr. Frazier. I move that we cancel the city council meeting scheduled for May 7th, 2018, and November 5th, 2018.
Okay, move on, Mr. Frazier, second by Mrs. Mars, that we cancel the May 7th, 2018, and November 5th, 2018 council meetings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. We move on to item number four.
Mr. President.
Mr. Frazier.
I move that we write a purchase agreement for the former Montgomery Ward Automotive Services property at the former Northland Mall.
This would be to approve it. It's been negotiated, drafted, it has all the standard clauses, and it's ready for approval.
I move that we approve. I amend my motion to approve the purchase agreement.
Question, I got a question.
All right, question, go ahead, Mr. Fercassi.
The million dollars, that coming out of the Northland budget?
That's correct, it has been presented to the committee, and you were there.
Yeah, I was there, I just wanted to make sure that this is coming out of the city budget.
Okay, the motion was Mr. Frazier, and supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve item number four of proposed purchase agreement for Montgomery Ward Automotive Services property.
Another question.
Another question.
Sorry. Through the chair, to Mr. Norn, is there, we get a breakdown of what's been spent with Northland so far?
I'll have, I'll have Cusser DDA Director provide that to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you heard the motion, it was approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We will skip over number five and go straight to item number six, because we have a discussion on five, so I might as well hold back the last.
Mr. President, yes?
Mr. President, I'd like to move to approve of the authorization to purchase, set up and install a retrofit PLC control panel for Evergreen Hills Golf Course Irrigation Park.
Moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Mrs. Mars, that we approve item number six, authorization to purchase, set up and install a retrofit PLC control panel for Evergreen Golf Course. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item is approved. We will now go back to item number five.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I move that we authorize a budget adjustment to the water service connections and water and sewer maintenance service contract to ALI construction.
Support.
Okay, we'll move on, Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve item number five, authorize budget adjustment for water service connection and water sewer, and water and sewer maintenance service contract. All in favor?
No, there's discussion.
Okay. I was waiting for somebody piped up, nobody piped up, so, the discussion on item four.
If I may, through the chair, each year, when we adopt the budget, and we entered into this contract with ILE, we anticipated an annual expenditure amount of $900,000. We have exceeded that $900,000 amount. I could process things as emergency payments, or bring it in front of the full council for process. And I've asked Mr. Searls to join us and go through, for example, why we went over. We had multiple projects based on unit pricing, where they are. Larry, you wanna please? And you are correct, we are cobbling multiple funding sources, because that is to cover where the expenditure, or the division, or the account that was responsible for that expenditure.
The reason, just to get onto the hot topic right now, the reason those four line items, specific line items were used in the water budget, is they're not going to be used in any other way, and they absolutely match the work that we're doing. We went over with ILE because we had a couple of jobs, such as the floor at the DPW yard. We ran out of time to go out and get the drains fixed. We had the resin contractor online to come in, with a very short window to get the work done. We just didn't have time to get our drains, which would have undone the floors' work anyway.
And we did- Clarifying, so, we literally had to go and cut out the floors and put all new drains in, because the drains were shot.
Right.
And we put in that new epoxy finish on the floor to control the dust and air quality.
Correct, and the floor had to be excavated down, the pipes replaced, because the drains absolutely didn't work. We had no time to do that. That is work that that company does, that's a service that they provide, and we just used their line items. I mean, we've extended that contract here and there for other jobs as they come up. There's, those are the jobs that you guys tell us we want done. Another thing that I didn't mention in the information that I provided to Linda, when we have these change orders and these capital jobs, we have a lot of capital work going on, sometimes these change orders are a little bit, well, they're a lot pricey, and sometimes it's cheaper just to pull it out of contract and do our contractor, our in-house contractor. So, we exceeded it, and we expect with the construction season coming, we're gonna need a little bit more money for issues like that. So, that's where we're at, we're eliminating line items in the water budget that we are not going to use. And that's why we pulled this from four different places.
Okay, any other discussion? Do we have a motion on the floor, and advance second it, that we approve this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it, this item is approved.
Through the chair, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You know, I try to find these funds in the budget, and I have, and I don't, I can't find them. In other words, it's like it's job public works. Is it a different account under public works, or?
I don't know what budget you have, I'm sorry.
17, 2017. Anyway, I just like to know what funds, and how much is in them.
Can you, that's a genuine question, can you pass him a full hand?
You're gonna be with us Thursday evening at the Finance Committee meeting?
Yeah.
I'll bring, is you're looking at the summary document, do you remember the one-
I just wanted something broken down, and to know where we're at financially, yes.
Okay.
All righty. Any other, anything that's, anything else on the good of the order? Mr. Frazier.
Something, something caught my eye and my attention when we were in the other room tonight, and something that we've been talking about on several occasions over the past year or so. When Kevin Harris came to the microphone to talk about his issue, he brought a backpack with him. He admitted that he had PTSD. He was seemingly agitated to it, and then, toward the end of his thing, he reached down and pulled his backpack out. I was hoping that you had your vote through, rest on, because I was gonna stand behind you.
You better leave my office.
But, we have talked many times about the police officer being down front, where something, if something happens, that there would be a level. And it, with all the things that are going on around the country, I think we need to reevaluate what our policy is and all.
I agree, I have the notes the same thing, and I was hoping he didn't go off into his military thing, but that is a factor. We can talk to the chief, and there's another item we talked to the chief about, which came up tonight. It was not communicated to him that we were starting at 5:30. And so, we wanna make sure that whatever lines of communication, that we set those lines of communication. And we can, if all, if all done in agreement, that we probably change perhaps the seating arrangement with the chief's agreement, you know, he's a security person, and if he deems that appropriate, we have moved to have the gentleman officer sit down front, a little closer somewhere.
We talked about it before, but, you know, nothing's ever happened.
We're gonna act on it now, it's gonna be, well, it's just a, it's a procedural thing. I don't think we need a vote on faith.
No, I didn't know if anybody else noticed it.
Oh, we are.
I noticed it, because you're back behind me. He looked, he's not, he's not cheaper than you.
Mr. President, through the chair. The reason a lot of people came late is because the notice that was sent to them from their apartments said 7:30, and they handed it to me, because they were saying, we wanted to speak, but it said 7:30, and you guys started early. But we didn't, that's what was communicated to them.
Right, right.
Mr. Frazier. The people had emailed me, I corrected the time. Obviously, I did not know everybody was gonna show up. I would also, just for the council's- I would also adjust to the council's anticipation, I have met with Mr. Harris, this incident is two years old, obviously, he's not over it. So I, during the meeting, I did contact the police chief, and I referred him to make a, his issues with the police department, I directed him on how to file a citizen complaint so that it could be investigated.
Right.
I thought that we were past all of that, just took me by surprise.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Farcas?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up, they had a gentleman come here from a gas station, and he was talking about the icebox out in front. All the gas stations, most of it in Southfield, the C-stores have iceboxes out in front. And, and, and I discussed this with Terry, and, and checked it also with Mr. Pilot, you know, he said you gotta get a site plan to move on icebox. Well, number one, iceboxes are necessary not only, not only for, for the businessman, but when you have a wire down and you get out of electricity, it's an emergency thing. And, and everybody runs to the local place to have ice. And, and so we're disenfranchising not only the dealer who's got the icebox, but from the emergency standpoint. And I don't know anywhere else you can get ice, you know, excepting for those stations. So I asked Terry, what does the rule say, or the ordinance say? And it says automotive-related, does not say boxes, all right? Says automotive-related. So I can tell you going down the street, every dealer, everybody that you got, being has to get a site plan, you tell where you put the box, that's all that amounts to. And they all got warnings, all the stations got warnings, all right? They say it's, it's because it's on the sidewalk, and it's, and that's why they're getting the notice. Well, not all of them are on the, the sidewalk where it appears the person getting into the place, it's usually on the side of the way. And, and I think we have to look at that, because it's a real hardship. And I asked also, how much does it cost for a site plan, just to show you where I put the box? It's $1,200 to a businessman, to just have, and architect go ahead and draw a square and move it over to another place, I mean, that's ridiculous what we're doing.
Is that considered outside storage?
Well, if it's not reflected on the site plan, then that's, that's the problem. Right.
But they, but you're not asked to put it on a site plan. They're doing it one across the street from him, all right? Putting a whole new top on, and me doing a whole facade of it, and it's not on his, the waist is lobster, but they don't ask for, where's your ice machine? So you don't put it on. So to add to it, that's a $1,200.
Well, shouldn't he talk to his architect when he's drawing up the plans for-
He doesn't call for it, it says auto-related, that means every dealership, every, every-
Are you saying auto-related outside storage?
No, it just said auto-related, you have to have a site plan.
Because we're talking about outside storage. Now, are you saying it's-
It's an auto storage.
Does our rule say auto-related outside storage, or just auto-
I can't answer, that's the way you answered me. That's the way you answered me, that's a site plan.
All right, all right, guys, okay.
But I mean, that's a real hardship.
I've been dealing with this for a long time now, and the various gas station owners, some of them, it did block the sidewalk, and so they had to, they would need to move it, except that this is not covered in outside storage, it's exactly that, auto-related, ice is not auto-related. I, I did kind, I sent a note to you, I don't know if you read it, but that this is something I would suggest the legislative committee take up. Mr. Farcas is correct, if they amend their site plan, it's going to be an expense. The various convenience store owners have told me, the reason they have it outside is partly what Mr. Farcas said, it's about 24-hour, 24/7 accessibility to ice. Also that for the delivery of the ice, it's more convenient for the, the ice, US ice provides a lot of it. And thirdly, the amount of heat that the ice machine generates is one of the reasons why they like, prefer to have it outside. So, and I did speak as recently as last week with Mr. Crowe about this, and he, he said, well, he thinks it's a slippery slope in that if you allow ice checks, what's next? And I said, but, you know, we can control what's next. Very correctly, most of the C-stores, and some of the little markets have the ice chest outside, and they've been there for years, and all of a sudden, this became an issue because at one gas station, I think it was off Eight Mile, it blocked the sidewalk in some, it was a handicap accessibility thing. So then code started issuing all of, all of these citations, and then I've lost track of how many of the owners have contacted my office about it. I think it needs to go to Legislative Committee, and maybe you could set that meeting tonight.
Just, I have one more thing.
Better to have the chair.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, let me just add one more thing. The Shell gas station at, at Evergreen in 12, if, if this guy, you know, let me put it this way, where the waste, they made him move his rubbish container so it isn't on the corner next to the party store. Now he moves it into a crevice area, out of the way of everything, right? But he said, you know how crazy this is? He says, this is where my handicapped is supposed to be on the site plan, and it's next to the car wash, where the ramp is to get into the front door of the gas station. He said, can I move the, the sign over to this other side where the ramp is? They said, no, you have to have a site plan. I mean, this is how ridiculous it gets, I mean, you know, now he's doing a whole facade, he come in with a big permit, putting thousands of dollars, millions of them, almost, putting all new pumps in, and getting modernized, and, and so the rubbish removal thing is on the site plan, but nobody asks him, you know, where's, where's your icebox? They ask him where the bike rack is, but they don't ask him where, where the icebox is. I mean, this is insane.
Ms. Mars? Through the chair.
Through the chair.
Through the chair.
Through the chair. Through the chair and through the chair.
The more we, the more we hit this-
The vote through the comments by Mr. Harris. Do we have an emergency evacuation, or like if it was to, it was a fire, where's a, how do we know which way to go, or have we had a fire drill, or?
Women and children first, all leave the room.
I mean, if, you know, I just-
There are a couple of security things, I think we're gonna have to highlight those for you, but it's for the drill, we should implement a drill, and that, that's a given. A drill should be implemented, and we can point out where certain emergency things are. But I think with my conversation with the chief, we want to make sure he restates his officer, and we will get a drill going here in Chamber, and also in the study, study room.
I'd like to do that, yeah.
Yeah, that, that, that's a given, we, we could have that, although we see where it is, but we need to have it be coordinated with, with an exit.
For us older guys, you just have the civil defense, and civil defense head, where you at?
Oh, that's right, yeah, okay.
And one of, we need to have the fire department also involved in the, the exit strategy, because if the building's not firing, you don't go through a room to get out of it, you don't go from one room to another room to get out of the building.
Well, I, and then, when we all were observing that, I was thinking in my mind, okay, how am I gonna get out of here? That's the first thing that I thought. And I didn't know if it was proper, I didn't know if I was doing the right, or, you know, so in any type of emergency situation, I don't want us bumbling over each other, or, so we need a plan.
Yeah, yeah, go right there.
I, I was thinking about that, but again, I would've had to go downstairs, if I didn't have my, my thing to get me out, you know?
When our last police chief was here, he was recommending to put a quarter-inch piece of, of steel, you know, so that we could just-
You could duck.
Duck down.
Right. They did recommend that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to the chief, we'll go to the chief, because that guy, he did bring, when he put his hand in that bag, I was, that was, that was-
They just said, no, it's bad.
By the way, when I did parachuting, you drop and roll. So you get down and just roll.
This is not funny, Dan.
I know, it was funny, but, but no, it's a very good point, I want to talk to the chief, but that would, and, and the fracture, both of them, it was an opening process, and no, not that we don't act. Yes, okay, do I have a motion, or do I just say?
There's no word on this, so we use it here.